No, the mayor said let's just do that.
What is that?
Food, more food.
Um, all right.
Acting city clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Here.
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Here.
Alderman Nguyen.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tendem.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Burris.
Here.
We have a quorum, welcome to the Monday, August 9th, 2010, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I have one announcement for the entire council as well as the community. I hope we will all agree, I would like to invite the library board to meet with the city council and discuss the library board's funding proposal. We have, the city council has many questions about the proposal, and I am convinced that if we meet, we can come up with a better solution that works for the entire community. Library services are a part of the bond that holds a community together. They should not be a source of division. At the moment, they are a source of deep division, and I think that we can do better if we all work together. So, I'm asking the council if you would all agree with our proposal.
I would.
All right, thank you then. I am in public, I believe the library board is here, inviting them to meet with us, and either we could take an hour at our next meeting, or Dar can email everybody and we'll try to come up with a date. Dor, do you want to do it now? We always fail in those attempts.
What is the date of our next meeting, mayor?
September 13th, I believe. Do you want to try a special meeting the week before?
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, between Labor Day and the Rosh Hashanah holiday, that makes that week particularly problematic for public meetings. If you'd like, if the council's available, the week of August 30th.
Alderman Nguyen.
Mayor, given the fact that this is August, and that many of us will have vacation days probably coming up, and then the start of school happens on August 30th, I'd suggest we take the hour before the next meeting on September 13th, because I think trying to find a date when we are all here and all of the library board members can come is going to be really difficult.
I agree with you. Alderman Burris?
Will any other elected officials from the state be involved in this meeting, or will it just be the library board and the council? And wanted to follow up too, on what kind of format? Is it in this room? And what does that format look like as far as where the library board is sitting, where we are sitting, and how will that meeting be conducted? I think it's something that it's important to think about those logistics before we come into a room.
It's my plan that we would be the elected officials that would be there. I do not anticipate any state officials coming, and I have not thought at all about the composition of the seating arrangements. This is not ending the Vietnam War, this is simply a, an attempt to improve funding for library services in the city of Evanston. But, those are good questions, and we will work them out before the meeting, and I will make sure that you know what the solution is before the meeting.
Thank you.
That concludes the mayor's public announcement, city manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have several items. First, I'd like to introduce interim fire chief Greg Kleiber, who would like to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, and audience members. I'd like to present to you Luke Austin Smith. The reason I am about to award Luke with the Fire Chief Citizen Accommodation Award is for the efforts he made on June 23rd of this year, and I will give you the details of those efforts in just a moment. I was, I received, forwarded an email from Alderman Nguyen, from the homeowner who's in the audience tonight, Jill Callian, whose home was struck by lightning on June 23rd, and as a result of that, her third-floor attic space area caught fire. And through Luke's efforts, he was able to make sure that the homeowner and her son were able to leave the house, and Luke's girlfriend then called 911, and as a result of that, our firefighters arrived on the scene within three minutes and extinguished the fire. So, what I would like to do is just read a quick excerpt from the email, which kind of paints the picture of how the evening went on June 23rd. And this is from Ms. Callian. "At approximately 5:50 PM on July, I'm sorry, it's July 23rd, my eight-year-old son, Christian, and I were alone in our home. A fierce thunderstorm was raging. Concerned that a tornado could be brewing, we were headed down to the basement when we heard a tremendous crash, which we took to be thunder. Unbeknownst to us, the crash was the sound of lightning strike, striking the turret of our home. The lightning strike ignited a fire in our attic. Unaware of this, Christian and I hunkered down in the basement. At that moment, Luke was apparently driving down Forest Avenue, saw the turret of our house ablaze with fire. Luke stopped the car, got out and ran, in the bucketing rain, to our door and rang our doorbell. When I answered the door, Luke alerted us to the fire. Christian and I ran out of the house to safety. The Evanston Fire Department soon arrived afterwards and extinguished the fire." Now, it's one thing, you know, we get a lot of 911 calls, people drive by on their cellphone and they see something, they call 911. It's another thing, you know, to get out of the car and pound on somebody's door to alert them to the fact that there is a fire in their home. Not only that, just doing that is heroic, but putting himself at risk with, this was still a storm happening. So, so for that reason, I would like to read the Citizen Accommoda, Citizen Accommodation Award to Luke. "On June 23rd, 2010, at 5:50 PM, Luke Austin Smith was driving down Forest Avenue during a violent thunderstorm. Lightning had ignited a fire in the attic of a home at 1246 Forest Avenue. As Luke drove by, he saw the fire and pulled over. He immediately went to the front door of the home, rang the bell, and alerted the homeowners that there was a fire in their home. At the same time, his friend, Liza Alexis Ferguson, called 911. The occupants safely exited their house and awaited the arrival of Evanston Fire, who arrived on the scene three minutes later and quickly extinguished the fire. Luke's quick action helped prevent significant damage to property and possible harm to the residents of 1246 Forest Avenue. Evanston Fire and Life Safety Services would like to thank and commend Luke Austin Smith for his selfless actions on June 23rd, 2010."
Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Thank you.
Is Ms. Ferguson here as well?
Ms. Ferguson is here. Come on. And the homeowner, Ms. Callian, would you mind standing with Christian? And if I, if I may, just take one second here and just praise the efforts of our firefighters on that day. You know, they arrived quickly, and, you know, we take pride in how we fight fires, and that is quick, aggressive, offensive action. And through Luke's efforts and the efforts of our firefighters that day, we, you know, prevented far more damage to the homeowners as well as their property, and I think that's something that should be mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Carolyn DeLutry, the executive director of Downtown Evanston, who would like to make a presentation regarding Downtown Evanston's proposed Varsity Theater Task Force.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It gives me great pleasure to be here this evening, and first of all, I would like to apologize for Dan Kelch, our chairman of the board, who could not be here this evening because he sits on the Performing Arts Center Board in Skokie, and he has a commitment on this night, so he could not be here tonight. So, as you can see, he's familiar with, with performing arts centers. I'd also like to recognize in the audience, we have Steve Rogan, the owner of the Varsity Theater, Russ Abel from the Hilton Hotel Orington, Hank Goldman from our executive committee, and a downtown resident, Jim Coriassi of the Downtown Residents Association. Also, we have Judy Kemp, who is the board president of Next Theater, as well as the board president of the Evanston Community Foundation, and Mary Beth Schroeder from the Evanston Community Foundation. I think I have everybody that I mentioned. It gives me great pleasure tonight that we are here to come before you to announce that Downtown Evanston is taking responsibility to move forward with creating a vision for a cultural arts facility located in the upstairs of the former Varsity Theater building on Sherman Avenue. As you know, Downtown Evanston conducted a goal-setting workshop in March of this year, which some of you participated in. Five goals were determined for the organization, and as a result of this workshop, two new project teams have been formed, the Business Recruitment and Retention Committee, as well as the Marketing Committee. A full copy of this report can be found at downtownevanston.org under Business Resources, and I believe all of you received a copy of that in the economic development report that I just recently submitted. With these goals, there are strategies associated with each goal, and our next step will be to start implementing goal number two, which is to promote the performing and visual arts in Downtown Evanston. The strategies include, determine if the upstairs of the now-vacant varsity theater space is capable of being rehabilitated as a performing arts space. In essence, what this is called is community-initiated development, and what happens during this process is you create a project team with stakeholders and partners, excuse me, and we've already begun discussing with some of those partners. Alderman Fisk has been part of the conversation, I know Alderman Wilson, I've talked to Alderman Nguyen, and quite a few of you. We've also talked to Next Theater, Pivant Theater, the Light Opera Works, the Arts and Business Committee of the city, the Arts Council. So, we're really trying to get everybody's input on things. The second phase of it is to raise funds and conduct a feasibility study of the upstairs of the now-shuttered former varsity theater space, and the study should include rehabilitation costs, ownership, management structure, and possible users. And then identify possible users of the space, especially existing performing arts organizations in Evanston, regional presenting organizations, and possibly Northwestern University. So, again, it's a grassroots effort. In working with the ownership of the varsity theater, they have been in contact with Kennedy Smith, principal of the Community Land Use and Economics Group, and I actually wanted to give each of you a copy of a recent report that she had done on rehabbing theaters. And she couldn't be here tonight because unfortunately, she's out of the country. Kennedy Smith is one of the nation's foremost experts on commercial district revitalization, downtown economics, and independent businesses, and a prominent spokesperson for economically and environmentally sound community development. Kennedy served 13 years as the executive director of the National Trust Main Street Center, which is a division of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. She has also served on the board of the League of Historic American Theaters for five years, and one year served as their executive director, which during that time, she created a national tax credit equity investment program, attracting $185 million in theater rehab work in its first year. She also developed a specialized insurance program for historic theaters that has resulted in better insurance and tens of thousands of dollars in savings for scores of historic theaters. Recently, Kennedy was in the Chicagoland area doing a market analysis work for another community. We contacted her to see if she could make a stop in Evanston and tour the theater. She visited and toured the theater, and spent about four hours with us, and also met with the city manager, Wally Bobkowitz, and was very impressed with the facility and also just all the stories that she heard of, how the community is really interested in this project. Kennedy then returned to her office and sent a proposal of how she envisioned the process. Right away, it was just amazing how she just kind of dove in and was emailing all these ideas. And she stated, "I have concluded that in order to help the theater's partners develop a realistically achievable vision, this process needs to begin with a clear understanding of the theater's physical constraints and possibilities, and of the general market and programming opportunities that might exist for it. With that information, we could then move forward with a vision for the theater's reuse, informed by its likely rehabilitation, budget, programming, opportunities, and other factors." She therefore proposed a following sequence and a scope of services, and the initial research, which we are here tonight to tell you that we are starting this first step in the beginning of September, and she'll be conducting telephone interviews with people who either individually or on behalf of organizations they represent may have interest in or information about the theater's reuse possibilities. She would then envision interviews with representatives of major Evanston-based institutions, performing arts groups, cultural organizations, and the State Historic Preservation Office, which I know she has already been in touch with them. This step would also include general estimates of market demand for various potential uses of the theater, whether it be performing arts, film exhibition, instruction, and conferences. The second phase, a little bit further down, a couple months, would be a resource team and vision development. And she, with her experience of being on the League of Historic American Theaters, she has identified some potential people to be on this resource team, an architect with significant experience in theater rehabilitation projects, and also someone that has experience with atmospheric theaters like the varsity, if you didn't know that that was an atmospheric theater. Also, a theater programming expert, and a theater rehabilitation, finance, and fundraising expert. The team would spend two to three days in Evanston. The first half-day would be to become familiar with the theater and the surrounding environment. Over the course of the next two days, the team would work individually and together to gather information, explore potential scenarios. So, again, we're putting together the team that's going to come back and say you could maybe do A, B, or C, and then once you have the partners at the table, then we could see how that could work out. So, the centerpiece of the team's work would be a several-hour-long session with a selected group of participants to articulate a vision for the theater's future. By having this small team of theater experts on hand during the vision development session, we can help ensure that the vision that emerges is informed, to the extent possible, by a practical understanding of the buildings and the market's opportunities and constraints, and that the vision will therefore be a realistically achievable one. So, and then the final phase would be, they would give us a final written report to provide a strategic direction and suggestions of specific actions for beginning the process. So, our goal as Downtown Evanston is to work with the property owner and all the stakeholders in the community, again, a community-initiated development process, and hopefully return to you with a vision for the second floor of the former varsity theater building by February of 2011. And I'm open for any questions you may have.
Seeing none, thank you very much for a very hopeful speech, and now we have questions. Judy.
It's not so much a question, but I just want to thank everyone involved, including Steve and Carolyn, who have, have persisted in this effort and in the discussion to create what, what I believe will be a real economic engine for the downtown. We've had so much success with the movie theaters, it just makes perfect sense that we would look at this beautiful theater with the idea of establishing a performing arts center here. So, I couldn't be happier, and was glad to have been invited on a tour, and the building is fabulous. It's in surprisingly good shape. I don't know how many times Carolyn has climbed up that ladder, but she's braver than I am. But, I just really want to encourage the community to give this your full support. I think this will make a huge difference in the downtown, and again, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, two additional presentations. This will be the council's last meeting until September 13th, so between now and then, we have a couple activities and events coming up. One is Labor Day, and with Labor Day comes a change in refuse collection schedules, and Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here to remind the community of those changes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. September 6th is Labor Day, and as a result, all trash, refuse, yard waste collection will occur one day later that week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Mr. Gainer to remind everyone about the community picnic that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, City Manager, members of the council, and Madam Mayor. Community picnic, Sunday, August 22nd, from noon to 5:00 here, right behind the Civic Center in Ingram Park. We're looking for a large crowd, we're going to have a lot of giveaways, games, and so on, and food. Jesse White tumblers will be here, we're going to have Shakespeare Theater, we're going to have a number of bands, so it should be really a great afternoon. And we still have a few spots on our list for individuals who would like to join in and participate in the dunk tank. Our fire chief did sign up this evening.
The interim fire chief.
Interim fire chief.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Acting city clerk, do you have communications?
No.
Thank you. Next is citizen comment, and everyone can have three minutes. I'm going to call the first four names, except that the first name I cannot read. Does anyone know who signed up first to discuss taxicabs? Mike, who? Ah, the B. No, there's no address. All right, let's try. Is it Marie? Figure, who signed up to do ta, to discuss taxis? They all left? You, sir, what's your name? Adam, you are on here, and you have good penmanship, so you definitely get to speak. Please come up to the microphone and give your name and address. Is there anyone else here who wants to discuss taxicabs?
My name is Adam Zead, my address is 619 Enterprise Drive, and that's in Oak Brook. I'm not actually a citizen of Evanston. I'm here today as a representative of American Taxi, American Taxi Dispatch, Inc. I'm sure that many of you have seen the taxis cruising around Evanston, seen them around Northwestern campus. I'm here today to really raise some attention about an ordinance that is up for proposal. It was up for proposal today, and it's kind of kicked out for the next meeting. And the issue is, this ordinance is going to potentially limit American Taxi and other companies from outside, like Flash Taxi or 303's taxis, ability to come in and service Evanston. And a couple of things that I'd like to mention are, American Taxi has had a very long and outstanding relationship with Evanston, and on top of that, they've had a very long and outstanding relationship with Northwestern University. Many of you call American Taxi for services, and this ordinance would potentially limit you from choosing the taxicab company of your choice. I guess to propose a scenario, you're looking through the phone book, you're trying to figure out somebody to call, and you, or in the alternative, you have a taxicab driver that you work with, or you're familiar with, they call that a personal, and you're no longer allowed to call that taxi driver, you're no longer allowed to call that taxi company. That's the kind of limitation that this ordinance would affect were it to pass. I ask you to really do no more than to pay attention to what this ordinance is doing. And I thank you all for your time, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council, and the fine citizens of Evanston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Ellen King and Carl Bova.
Hi, my name is Ellen King, and I'm chair of the Evanston Backyard Chicken Committee. I just wanted to thank all the members of the Human Services Committee for all of the time that we've spent on this issue. I'd also like to thank the city council for taking the time to discuss this important issue. Allowing backyard chickens in Evanston shows the city's commitment to the Evanston Climate Action Plan by encouraging the citizens to raise their own food in Evanston. Backyard chickens are all about having local, healthy, fresh food in your backyard. It allows parents to teach their children the importance of food, and how difficult it is to actually produce your own food in your backyard. A lot of people go to farmer's markets, and that's a wonderful way to be exposed to fresh vegetables grown in the local area, but to take your child in your backyard and show them an egg that was laid overnight is pretty empowering. We just want to have Evanston follow other communities that are environmentally progressive, allowing their citizens to raise eggs in their backyards, so that they can teach their children and their neighbors about local food. Thank you. I encourage any questions, comments, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Carl Bova, 1322 Rosalie Street. I'm here this evening to endorse and ask your approval for agenda item number SP1, which is the proposed five-year street improvement program. I'm disappointed with the leftover projects from the previous years, because postponement usually means additional cost to the city, but I also recognize that there are many good reasons for delaying projects, including addressing other streets that have deteriorated at a faster rate than those that were left over. As for the next five-year plan, an economic downturn is an opportunity for the development of a longer plan, say 100 years, to match the expected lifetime of water and sewer infrastructure. We need to rethink our spending to include new methodologies for roadway reconstruction and rehabilitation, especially for asphalt roads. Begin to include reconstruction of select low and high-traffic-volume streets, which much longer-lasting concrete material, and revise our specifications and standards accordingly. The bottom line is that a longer outlook plan must enable us to realize longer-term, extended, useful service life for our roads, at the most affordable competitive price. Finally, the longer-range plan must include roads, bridges, alleys, sidewalks, and curbs. These are all integral to the performance of our street system, and the ultimate liability associated with each of those elements. It must be flexible enough to jump on special funding sources, such as safe routes to schools, FTA funds for streets near transit, tiger grants, as well as our usual sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Junad Rizki, Chris Stewart, Mary, I can't do the last name, 2503 Prairie Avenue, and Griffin? That would be you, and Mike Vasilko.
I'm just going to have one quick comment. Tonight, and I believe this was the first time the city council approved credit card use, used by employees on the agenda. It appears that a lot, a lot of employees here have credit cards and are using credit cards, and it seems like the city is spending close to $80,000 to $100,000 a month, if I'm not mistaken, in credit card use. And this is a lot of money for people, and if we're, if we're in a tight budget situation, I'm not sure why employees need to use credit cards continually to make all kinds of purchases. I think this needs to be looked at carefully. Also, the other thing that needs to be looked at is the controls in place to run this, because I've asked some people some questions, and I have some doubts of some of the controls that are in place that really allow a very good auditing procedure to, to occur. Seems to be very individually-run by departments, rather than a central control. That's all I have to say, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, probably approaching a million dollars.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Christopher Stewart. I live at 1206 Dewey Avenue. I am the current President of the Evanston Public Library Board of Trustees. Like my colleagues on the library board, one of whom is here, I was appointed by Mayor Morton and approved by the City Council. Last Wednesday, the board voted to set a new direction for Evanston Public Library. I'm here tonight to provide brief comment on that decision. I'm saddened to report to you that EPL, as you may know, by shockingly wide margins, is the poorest-funded library among our neighboring communities in northern Illinois. Every year, our collections grow older and more out of date, and thousands of much-needed books and digital resources that should be provided to the community are not. Our technology is outmoded, and the library's ability to provide quality neighborhood services has been compromised for years. The library has also, like other city departments, recently eliminated several positions. The library's journey to the bottom has spanned years of chronic underfunding in good economic times and bad, fueled by neglect, politics, and often, but not always, indifference and a lack of knowledge to the crucial and evolving role public libraries play in the community. We believe it is time for a change. We believe it is time for a new model. The library board supports a funding model that is used by most non-district municipal libraries in Illinois and is supported by Illinois law. We are confident that by working closely with the council, the mayor, the city manager, and citizens, the library fund can be implemented in a way based on pass-through revenue and negotiated chargebacks that minimizes the impact on Evanston's taxpayers in these tough economic times. We are taxpayers too. Over the next several years, the board will move cautiously, transparently, and prudently with a goal towards long-term, sustainable, predictive funding. We can, with your help, begin the long road to recovery for Evanston Public Library. I ask, the board asks, that you join us. Thank you.
I hope you heard our invitation to meet with you.
My name is Mary Griffin. I live at 2503 Prairie Avenue in Evanston, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. I am here this evening to add a comment as, as a resident of Evanston and a member of the library, of Evanston Public Library, to the efforts that have been going on by the Friends of the Evanston Library regarding this issue regarding the funding and the funding issues here. Some months ago, there was a fundraising effort begun because the branch libraries were going to be closed if the citizens of Evanston did not raise enough money to keep those branches open. I made a contribution to this fund and was, had also offered to volunteer my time and services as the Friends may have found need. I was approached to do some legal research regarding the Illinois Local Library Act. And at that time, I was very surprised to learn that the Illinois Legislature has already addressed how libraries are supposed to be funded. There is an act that has been in place for decades. There's a certain percentage of the revenue that is raised by our tax dollars that is supposed to be segregated and paid over to the library for the library to implement and operate and maintain the libraries. I'm, it was very concerned to see that for decades, this has not been happening. The, the City Council, the Board of Trustees, the library, is supposed to discharge its duties to the cities of Evan, to the citizens of Evanston, and has a fiduciary duty to all of us to carry out what the legislator has, legislature has already enacted. I believe that the, in fact, that the money that the Friends have been raising is in effect, a second time that people are paying to keep the library open when the tax dollars have already been designated to fulfill this purpose. I hope that with the, the communication that has been suggested between the City Council and the Board of Trustees, that the funding issue for the Evanston libraries will be addressed, and I look forward to hearing of a positive outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. I'm personally in favor of the mayor's proposal for the council and the library board to meet. I'm not in favor of any new taxing authority in Evanston. I'm against any new additional property taxes in Evanston. Yet this is exactly what I heard the evening of August 4th at the Library Board of Trustees' less-than-transparent meeting. Seconds after voting themselves to be an independent taxing fund, the Board of Trustees began contemplating restoring budget cuts and a new South Branch Library building. In other words, this is another way of saying additional property taxes, and in Evanston, we don't need any new additional property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ellen Newcomer, Lorraine Hughes, and Bernice Valentinus. And thank you all for your excellent penmanship.
My name is Ellen Newcomer. I live at 2445 Ridgeway, and I'm speaking tonight for the Evanston Public Library Friends. Last Wednesday, as Dr. Stewart told you, the Evanston Library Board of Trustees voted to invoke the Illinois Local Library Act and thus assume control of the budgeting process for the library. The library took this step after years of annual skirmishing over library funding, seven months of discussion in open library board meetings, and also after presenting at the June 28 City Council Meeting a written report on sustainable funding, which included this option. The library board's action should not come as a surprise or, or an affront to the City Council. The board's deliberations were open and lengthy, nor is the board's decision unusual. About half the public libraries in Illinois use the model of governance that Evanston Public Library will now follow. The other half are completely independent library districts. Nonetheless, at least one member of the council took great offense at the library board's action. After listing the names and emails of the library board members on an internet site, Alderman Ann Rainey went on to say, and I will not quote it.
Citizen Comment is intended to foster dialogue in a respectful and civil manner.
And I will, I will not quote it. But it was a rather distasteful blog. I'll leave it at that. Her words violate a city ordinance which prohibits libelous, defamatory, or inflammatory written statements intended to stir up racial or class hatred. Since this vitriolic and inflammatory post, there has been an internet firestorm of ugly.
Ellen, I don't see how this is fostering civil and respectful dialogue.
I'll get there. I, I promise, I will.
You don't have much time to do it.
I understand that. The board has received numerous emails filled with rage. This incites the worst part of our humanity, or lack thereof. Rage begets rage. The reason I wanted to come and talk to you tonight is that the Friends obviously did not advocate, engage in, or condone any of this. We seek a civil dialogue. That is how citizens and cities should act, and I hope that the council will take action to ensure that this behavior does not continue. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lorraine Hughes and I'm on Barton, and I don't know that I really need to speak now because I was very pleased with your opening remarks, and as one who has been confused and bothered by what I have read on the internet and heard recently, I just wanted to make sure that the council and the library are working together to help those of us that are wondering why we have these, these potential taxes happening, just to make sure that we're all working together and thinking for the greater good for everybody. So I'm really pleased that both groups are getting together to help sort this out for those of us that are wanting some clarity. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm Bernice Valentinus, and I live at 2656 Broadway, and I'm here this evening to speak in favor of the library board's decision to pursue a library fund solution. But more than that, I'm here to speak in favor of the process by which it was chosen. I'm a citizen who's just been very, very active for the first time in a long time in Evanston to support the expansion and modernization of our library. The process was one of clarity, superb research, consideration of all stakeholders, and, and their economic impacts, and I would encourage every citizen that's here, including the council, to carefully read, not only listen to what people's opinions about it are, but actually read the document, which is posted for all to see online. The thing that I am most proud of in the process, which I think is what I'd like to believe Evanston is about, is there was always civil discourse. I would ask that the council itself ensure that civil discourse underpins all of its communications with each other and with the citizens of this community and not disrespect them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next is a special order of business, City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're here this evening to begin the budget process for what will be fiscal year 2011. And as the council's, one of its goals, as stated previously, wanting to have more involvement in the development of the capital improvement program. So we are here this evening to begin discussions about that specifically looking at water main replacement and street resurfacing projects. Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works, is here and has a short presentation. And as she comes up in your packet, beginning on page nine, is a staff report which details the streets that we are proposing to at least begin to start some preliminary engineering and be able to present to you in future meetings as we discuss the capital budget. As you know, there's a special meeting scheduled for the 20th of September. At that meeting, we will have additional discussions about the capital improvement program, but in order for us to begin the process, we wanted to have this preliminary discussion this evening. So unless there's any initial questions, I'll let Ms. Robinson start the presentation.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And tonight, we're asking your approval of the project list. This is the, the fifth year of our five-year road resurfacing program that was previously approved by City Council. And we're asking approval of that plan, and then also approval to proceed with the development of our next five years. I'm going to introduce Paul Schneider, the city engineer, and he's going to go through our selection process and, and the status of our program to date, the five-year program to date. Thank you very much.
Before we start, for those who are looking for the documents, on page nine of the packet. Master, page nine. Is anyone having difficulty finding it? One side of the table seems to be. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, City Manager. I'm Paul Schneider, city engineer. As Suzette said, today we'd like to share with you our proposals for the upcoming 2011 street program. In Evanston, we've got 190 miles of roadway pavement. By far, the majority of that is asphalt surface. We do have some concrete roads. And basically, we work on a five-year program, so every five years, we evaluate, reevaluate the streets to set a, a program up for the, for the upcoming years. We are currently, this, this 2011 proposal will represent the end of the current five-year plan, so what we want to do then is begin to start thinking about our next five-year plan. Basically, as Suzette said, August 14th, 2006, was when council last approved this program. Basically, we hire a consultant to do materials testing. We also make use of our staff field inspections. Both the engineering staff and our public work staff coordinate on that. And we also work very hard to coordinate with water main and other private development projects going on so that we don't have fresh cuts in brand-new roads. Some of the strategies we look at, minor patching, crack filling, that's typically undertaken by our streets and sanitation crews. Also, they have the ability to do some minor maintenance work for grinding and resurfacing. Some of this was done more recently, I think on dumpster vicinity of Pittner, where we had some surface vibration problems with the adjacent homes. The projects more with the capital improvement program are grinding and resurfacing, neighborhood streets, minor base repairs. As we work on arterial streets, again, we look at thicker overlays. We also look at more major base repairs. And when roads get in such severe condition, we have to consider reconstruction as well. Particularly when we get to the end years of a program, there's been differential degradation of the streets. So every year, we go out annually and we, we review all the streets, and we may make modifications in the program. One of the main things, of course, is funding availability. We also, again, try and coordinate closely with other departments to make sure we're not stepping over each other's projects. We do, again, at the end of the program, have a number of carryover projects from previous years that we have to go back and evaluate and bring into the current years. We also, again, work closely with Water Main to make sure that our priorities are matching up with their priorities as well. Comparative roadway conditions, again, that's going out in the field. Some roads may have deteriorated more severely over the five years from the testing than, than others, so we, we try and keep our finger on that. And again, looking for potential conflicts with other city projects. It's not going to be very clear here, but basically, you know, in your packet, you've got what we're proposing for the 2011 street improvement program, representing probably about four miles, little over four miles of road. The current funding in general is making use of MFT funding, the water main funding coming from the water funds, and then utilizing CIP funds to fund the rest of the roadway project. The total funding we're, we're looking at is approximately 4.2 million for the 2011 program. Looking back over the program from 27, 2011, if we look, including the program that we're proposing to you, these are the streets that are going to remain unfinished, street segments. So there are approximately 43 segments that we originally had built into the program that we wanted to get to that we are not going to get to by the time we, we complete this five years. So that's a little over seven miles worth of street. Looking forward then to the next five-year program, early next spring, we are going to get out and we hire a consultant to do materials testing the road. They'll test both the surface and on the arterial streets, particularly the truck routes. They'll also test the base of the road, so we get a feel for that. That will be followed up by staff field verification in the spring. We also do utility coordination. NICOR and COMED both have aggressive programs going on in the city right now. And at that point, through the late spring and summer, we'll develop a new five-year program to cover the years from 2012 to 2016. So we will look to come to council again next summer with that new program. And at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Grover?
We have butter on the desk.
We have no help to offer here.
We'll get you something.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and apologies to Alderman Rainey for having created a puddle on her desk.
That's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. My question is, thinking back to Mr. Boba's comments earlier about whether we can even think longer term about our transportation planning and roadwork planning. And I'm thinking about an article that appeared today, I think in today's Chicago Tribune about the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and their 30-year plan for transportation in the metropolitan region. Does it make sense for us to, while we have a five-year plan, street improvement plan, does it make sense for us to think even longer term? Part of this article in the Chicago Tribune highlighted a number of what the Tribune called blunders, mistakes they had made in the long-term planning and how it created additional traffic problems. Are we self-contained enough that we don't need to do?
Well, no. In fact, I think we have done. Just last year, the multimodal plan was put out, and again, that was a broad framework. But I think as far as planning capital improvements, I do think a five-year program is probably appropriate to go much beyond that. Even this time, at this time, you know, five years out, we're going back and reevaluating whether the program we thought five years ago for 2011 was appropriate for 2011. And we're actually doing a lot of other streets that we weren't able to do in prior years. So at some point, if you try and plan the capital end of it too far out, I think you do a lot of work that comes to nothing in the end. But yeah, I feel most comfortable that five years, I'm also comfortable that we do have the multimodal plan as a framework for that type of a planning exercise, especially, you know, for the transportation end of things. We probably could work a little more closely with planning and make sure that what we're doing is coordinated with what's going on in the zoning and things like that, particularly when it comes to our arterial streets. So, you know, that's probably one of the planning efforts we'll try and look to increase some activity on in the future.
Great, thank you. Alderman, when?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Schneider, I just want to make sure I understand. In the presentation, you were saying that there were, am I correct, 42 streets that were not, will not have been completed during the five-year plan?
Forty-three. Forty-three street segments, so.
Street segments.
Yeah, and those could be anywhere from two to three blocks usually are, and said, I don't know, usually are, when we pave a road, we usually pave, what, three to four blocks? So it represents about seven, a little over seven miles of road that went unpaved in this program.
And what are the, was it simply lack of funding that caused those street segments to be unpaved?
Primarily, primarily. There was also coordination that was going on. I think if you look back to 2007, 2008, a lot of that was more coordination, I think, with water main projects. We had been coordinating that Wilmett Interconnect on Ashland that never went through. And I think, you know, that was originally programmed in 2008, so, you know, that was a big piece. And there are others. I think along Kendall College, we kind of held off on some projects anticipating some improvements there that never came to be. So those streets will probably find their way back into the next five-year program.
That's my next question. So what do we do with those 43 street segments, streets that five years ago we determined needed to be in the plan?
Well, as you can see, most of the streets we haven't been able to catch up to are in the outer years. So as we reevaluate for the next five years, those streets also be reevaluated freshly with all the other streets. And I'm certain if they turned up five years ago as in need, that they haven't gotten any better in five years, so they'll show need again.
Okay. Now, I have another question about the chart that we have that's 2011 Public Works Street Improvement Program. These are the streets that will be paved, paved next year?
Those are the ones we're proposing to be paved next year. At this point, if we get approval tonight, we will start design on those streets. And then considering the environmental, the funding environment, you know, certainly we'll make, excuse me, we'll make decisions on which ones are fundable. You know, as we design them, we'll do design estimates and tie down which streets will actually be able to fit into the program. There'll be most of them.
Right, okay. So then, this list is separate from the addition, the 22 that's there, that are listed as being and not being completed?
That's right. That's right. If we construct that list as you have it, these 43 segments will have still been left out.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Alderman, tandem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just out of curiosity, I know it's not part of this five-year or ending five-year plan, but what has happened to the work proposed for Isabella Street funded, I believe, through federal and a match from us?
Yeah, actually, council had approved that. We had submitted the award letter to IDOT, at which point, they were supposed to release the funds to us. They have, actually, 95% of the construction funds, that was for Isabella and Emerson as well. We have not received those, we have not received those funds yet. So until we receive those funds, we will not give the contractor notice to proceed, especially given the state's predicament as well right now.
I see no further lights, so thank you very much, Mr. Schneider.
And Madam Mayor, then, really would bring your attention to page 11 of the packet this evening. These are the streets that we would like to begin work on. This is not a final decision that we're asking the council to make. This will come as part of your later capital improvement project deliberations for 2011. But we would like at least general direction that this is, at least, this will be the larger set of streets. And then, as funding is available, we would come to you with likely a subset, as Mr. Schneider said, of, we'll do everything we can to construct a capital program to fund the entire list. I think it is too early in our budget preparation to know that we will be making that recommendation, but that would be our intention.
Alderman, Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the proposed 2011 Public Works Street Improvement Program.
Second. I'm seeing no further lights. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That should give you your general direction.
Thank you, Madam.
Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First item is approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of July 19. Oh, before I continue, could I introduce the mayor of Libertyville, who's with us tonight?
Yes, you absolutely could.
Would you like to stand up? We all have some connection to the mayor of Libertyville, and he's here, he's here on a matter having to do with the house on Brown Avenue.
Welcome.
On end.
Do you have as easy a job as our mayor?
You can come back anytime.
First item is approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of July 19. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 26. The committee, Administration Public Works Committee, requests your approval of the payroll through August 1st in the amount of $2,458,601.31. The City of Evanston bills through August 10 in the amount of $2,601,152.81. And the City of Evanston credit card bills through June 30th in the amount of $100,945.68. Administration Public Works Committee requests your approval of the most responsible and low bid from Mark Vending in the amount of, let's see, how much is this? In the amount, oh, this is for all of our vending machines throughout all the city buildings. And one of the agreements they have made is to provide up to 15% of the proceeds from sales to our city employee committees. And the 2009 revenues received were $13,115.67. We ask your approval also of a contract award for the 2010 block curb sidewalk and ADA ramp replacement program. Low bidder was Schroder &amp; Schroder in the amount of $97,630 with funding from the Capital Improvement Fund and CDBG funds. The committee is requesting your approval of a sole source purchase of data pack system upgrades for the city-owned parking garages so that we'll be in compliance with the new payment card industry data security standards. And that would be through RevCon Technologies in the amount of $26,700. The 911 Committee and the Administration Public Works Committee asks your approval of $849,927 to be spent for the purchase of 911 center upgrades from Motorola. This is from the 911 Emergency Systems Fund. And this is for the replacement of furniture fixtures and equipment that have not been replaced since 1992. We ask your approval of a contract extension to purchase Rock Salt for 2010-11 winter season. This is for 6,000 tons from Morton Salt in the amount of $344,100. We request your approval also to apply for the Tiger II grant application for construction of the West Evanston Plan. This would be for Church Street, McDaniel to Ashland, and Dodge Avenue from Main to Approval is requested for the March 1, 2010 Police and Firefighter Pension Actuarial Report. Excuse me, would you like this off the agenda?
Yes.
Off the consent, this is off the consent agenda, A37, and will be addressed by the committee chair. We request your approval for 50R10, this is for action, for the Service Center Short-Term Lease Agreement Extension. We're going to extend this through August, through June 30, 2011. The monthly rent will remain the same at $800 a month. Request your approval of Ordinance 52010 regarding, oops, this, now, I'm going to introduce this, it's going to be referred back to the committee. Ordinance 52010 regarding taxi cab regulations. This is for introduction and will be returned to the committee for further work. Ordinance 65010, across, I'm wondering, I'm going to move introduction and then the committee chair can move suspension of the rules, which we've been requested to do. This is Ordinance 65010, which provides for the issuance of GO Bonds Series 210. This is in the amount of, let's see, $8 million, and the date for the sale is currently scheduled for August 16. I'm moving introduction, but the committee chair will address further action on this. Next is A7 for action as amended, so I'm going to remove this from the, there was some discussion, Madam Mayor, as to whether this is for, this is for action, I believe, tonight.
Yes.
So it was amended, so I'm going to remove it for the committee chair to indicate the amendment. Then we have planning and development. Under planning and development, approval of a plan of subdivision for 2146 Brown Avenue. The committee requests your approval for that. P2 is for action also, which is an approval of a request for an extension of the expiration of the planned development at 1603 and 1619 Orington. The committee requests your approval. P3, approval of the request of Andy's Frozen Custard for a first-time sidewalk cafe. This is at 719 Church Street. The next item is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. That's 1408 Dempster. Next item is Ordinance 62010, which grants a special use for 616 Davis Street in downtown two. This is the Tiny Dog Bakery. I'm going to move introduction and I believe the committee chair will address this further. Next, Ordinance 56010, which grants a special use for a type-two restaurant at 816 Church Street. This is for Five Guys, and this is for Action Tonight. Under Human Services, that committee requests your approval of the Township of Evanston bills in the amount of $96,468.52. This is for the month of July. For introduction, your agenda reads incorrectly. H2, Ordinance 64010, amends Title VIII of the City Code to add Chapter 26, mobile food vehicle vendors, otherwise known as food trucks. This is for introduction. Next is Ordinance 23010, which is also incorrect on your agenda. This is for introduction. And this is an ordinance which amends various sections of Title IX, Public Safety, Chapter IV, Dogs, Cats, Animals, and Fowls of the City Code, commonly known as the Chicken Ordinance. Then, under Other Committees, we have approval to fund storefront improvement for the Asha Salon Spa located at 1604 Sherman Avenue. This is a recommendation of the Economic Development Committee, who reviewed this matter several times. Next, O2 is approval of engagement of a consultant for development of business attraction plan for economic revitalization. Under O3, the committee asks your approval of funds for Howard Street Business Association from the Economic Development Fund. This is for $9,000. O4 is Ordinance 58010, which grants an extension until September 12, 2015 for the electric ordinance. And I would like to move this from the agenda, and it will be addressed by the committee chair. Madam Mayor, there are no appointments, and with that, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fiss?
Aye.
Alderman Zambutis?
Aye.
Alderman Win?
Aye.
Alderman Malas?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Shaw-Baptiste?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Calling the council's attention to item A3.7. Move approval of the March 1, 2010 actuary valuation for usage in the 2009-2010 Comprehensive Annual Finance Report and for usage in the 2011 tax levy for police and firefighter funding purposes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Would anyone like to speak? Alderman Burris.
Yes, I'd like for Mr. Lyons to please come up and talk a little bit about the assumptions. And once again, I want to thank him, as I did in AP&amp;W, for the amount of work that was put in and the tables. But once again, the tables tell us a grim story. And we are severely underfunded, the percent funded compared to other municipalities. And I realize that we aren't going to raise our, or lower our percentage because that will end up raising taxes. But I wanted to be really transparent to the citizens that we're making honest choices and giving them all the information, that we're not pretending, like this is really going to get us to a point where we can fund the pensions at this percentage rate, but that we're doing it so we don't raise taxes. So I just want to address that, and if Mr. Lyons could talk a little bit about that, that'd be helpful.
I would also, excuse me, Alderman Burris, I would also say that we're doing this because it doesn't matter how much we put in, these pensions are unsustainable, and we need a political solution in Springfield. This system where Springfield determines what goes into the pensions and we are left paying for them is not a workable system.
I agree with you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. This is our third discussion on the, the actuarial reports, and in this last go-around, we gained a lot of, I think, very valuable information, both on comparable communities and on additional information from our actuary, GRS. As noted by Alderman Burris, this does not fix our pension system overnight, and the amount that it would take to fix it overnight is staggering. That being said, looking at our comparables, and when I say that, these were 11 communities that we went out and researched, grabbed their actual reports, and my thanks to the administrative services staff and those communities for getting those reports. This comparison that you see in your report is a look at 2009 data because not all of the communities have their 2010 data, so we're really comparing ourselves back one year, and then we're recommending a change in our report moving forward. So that being said, the report shows that our assumptions are heading in the right direction, but again, will not solve our problem. We are doing, I won't say we're doing better based on our situation. Our assumptions are designed to bring in more funding because we're recognizing that we're not getting that funding from other sources, that being investment income. By lowering our interest rate assumption, we're recognizing that we aren't getting the money from that source, so we need to put in the additional money. And then, we looked at, as alternatives, we looked at what would happen if we changed our other assumptions, such as our wage rate assumption, because in the last several years, we did not make our wage rate assumption. Our wages went up higher than what was assumed. So when we look at that, you see that we have a analysis that shows the levy going up a lot higher than the $1.8 million increase that would be projected for the 2011 amount. Again, it's still, it will make a dent. What it does do, as is the case in this science, is it makes us look as if we are not as well-funded because we are, again, saying we aren't going to get money from investment income by reducing it further to 6.75%, or we're going to incur more costs than we previously projected, also making our fund look as if it is not as well-funded. So, in trying to catch up, we show that we're a little farther behind, if that makes sense to everyone. Again, our assumptions are more conservative than the state's actuarial recommendation. These are, in many ways, a little more conservative than the peer group of 11, that's hardly an exhaustive group of communities, but it's a step in the right direction, and as we noted in previous reports, we'll need to continue those steps if we're going to gain a handle on our funding. As I noted before, one of the things that we're still hopeful on is that there will be changes at the state level with either benefit levels or time for funding of those benefits. So at this point in time, we're still recommending that we proceed with the report as originally presented, and that we look for that change in sometime post-November for direction from the state. If no changes happen, we know that we're on our own, and we will still want to go out and take a look at whether or not we need a different report to potentially catch up further. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Alderman Rainey.
Well, we had a good discussion at AP&amp;W, but what I really want to encourage people to do who aren't here is to look at these documents that we got. They're, you know, they're, they're very interesting, and some of the charts are actually understandable. And 198 on, in, on the, in the packet, if you're looking at your packet online, for people to see what commitment the city has made over time and how we compare to other communities. You know, you can read any time, online, any place, that Evanston isn't doing their fair share for the pension funds. Well, we out, we out-contribute double, in most cases, to other communities, yet we still continue to fall behind because of all the many variables. And so, I would just encourage people to at least, you don't have to like what you see, but at least look at the numbers and, and see what they look like. Thank you very much, it was a great report.
You, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, and I also want to thank you for the information, the research, and the great deal of hard work that you and the staff have put into this ongoing project. And I'm going to keep saying it, and the mayor's going to keep saying it, and I'm not going to stop saying it, but it doesn't seem to be sinking in for, you know, the rest of the known universe, but this, these numbers and these charts are beyond troubling, and we have to do something about the way that the pensions are done. And that doesn't mean having the legislature pass a law that says we have to give them all of our money day after tomorrow. Those kinds of solutions are not solutions, those are, you know, not answers to the problems. So people, in my view, need to let your state legislators know. Don't just complain to me because I don't, I don't go to Springfield and I don't vote, and, and nobody's doing that. You know, when I talk to legislators, they're not hearing from everybody. So I'm, like I said, I'm going to keep saying it, and I'm going to be a broken record, and, and we need to change this. But as Alderman Rainey mentioned, we put a lot of money in here, and we are at a 43% funded level. And, you know, it's, it's interesting to me because, not that other issues aren't important, you know, libraries are important, you know, food supplies are important, all of these things are important, but wow, if we don't fix this, all of those other things really aren't going to make a whole, whole heck of a lot of difference, so keep that in mind.
Alderman Shaw Baptiste.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Alderman Rainey and Alderman Wilson, and I would just state to Alderman Burris that when we look at ourselves relative to other municipalities, we've also got to take into consideration our multiple priorities internally to the city that we have to address with the budget that we have. And I know you know that, but I think that as we, you know, discuss this matter with the rest of the community and those who are watching, the city continues to take care of its obligations. And so, as we move forward, hopefully it will be fixed legislatively, and maybe we'll have a, an economic boom around the corner again. But, you know, we think that, because we are taking care of business, that we would have to resist and continue to fight to, to continue to be fair to ourselves, to, to do what we have to do, as opposed to being under the gun and being forced to take just such a large chunk of our money every year and invest in the pension fund.
Alderman Tandem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just noticing on our city website, under Government Officials, at the bottom it has elected officials, they go all the way up to the federal level. Although the state officials that we would like most people to contact do not have direct links from our website, I'm wondering if that's information that we could either include or to link to the appropriate website, because I know that for Jan Schakowsky, Richard Durbin, Roland Burris, it does give us a direct link, although that's to their own page. Possibly be just the best place to reach them by email or by, by mail would really help people direct, get things directly to them. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a great idea. City manager, since it's our next meeting, when Mr. Roth, who is the pension authority, will be coming, and if you think you're depressed now, wait till he comes, he's a very nice man.
He's going to come with the exact date that Evanston will go bankrupt.
From the pensions, that's not considering all the other things.
That's right, we're going to sell calendars.
But after that meeting, I think it would be an excellent time, armed with lots of knowledge, to contact legislators and really push people to do that. All right, seeing, oh, one more light, Alderman Burris.
Yeah, I actually just want to respond to Alderman Jean Baptiste. I'm, I'm well aware of the competing priorities, but it comes down to, we just keep paying a minimum on the credit card with the hope that the credit card is, company is going to change the terms of our, the agreement. And I just feel that we need to just be honest with the next generation, the generation after that, that we aren't leaving them in a, we're not leaving the city in a solid place right this moment. And I do agree that we, we hope that Springfield will make changes, but if they don't, we have to make some substantial changes and be honest with ourselves and honest with our residents. And you are right, we have a lot of social service issues and needs here in this community, and I know that you speak for your ward a lot, but we have to look at the overall community and the fiscal health of the community, and not just keep getting by from year to year. And that's where I come from on, when I talk about these issues and when I ask for this information from Mr. Lyons, we just need to be transparent, and I think for too many years that we probably haven't been as transparent and haven't had this amount of detail and explanation to citizens on why we make the choices we do. So, once again, not saying that necessarily choices were wrong, people make them for obvious various reasons, I just don't think that we necessarily are leaving the city in the best financial condition.
Right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the Police and Firefighter Pension Actuarial Report, seeing no further lights. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
But there are two noes. Who was the, Alderman Wilson, thank you.
Oh, when it was me.
I knew, I did somehow figure that one out. All right, the motion passes seven to two.
Madam Mayor, we continue with our report. For Item A5, there, you know, again, as Alderman Rainey indicated, is introduced, we will not be requesting to suspend the rules. This matter is held in committee for further discussion. I think the Taxi Advisory Council, which has not really been meeting, will try to convene with Steve O'Sullivan as our staff person, trying to pull them together. I think our city attorney will also sit in, and we'll get more comments on this ordinance that is being proposed. Item A6, this matter has already been introduced, and before we suspend the rules, we wanted to see if Marty Lyons could give us a report on this particular matter. This is Ordinance 65-0-10, and we are recommending approval of the ordinance that I just noted for the issuance of $6.5 million in 20-year tax exempt and $88.8 million in nine-year tax, taxable GO Bonds. This ordinance will be completed and signed after the sale date currently scheduled for August 16, 2010. There were some questions at the committee level, I think Alderman Burris had asked that Marty clarify. There was an email that was sent from Mr. Kaplan, raising issues, some differences in terms of our approach, and that we could have, have achieved greater savings had we moved earlier, et cetera, et cetera. So Marty will address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight, again, is a two-phase bond issue, where we're looking at tax-exempt bonds for our capital improvements program. The program itself was $11 million in tax, I'm sorry, in tax-exempt bond-funded capital projects. We're proposing that we only do $6.5 million at this point and look towards the end of our old fiscal year, so in February, for looking at new bonds. At that point in time, it's possible that we'd be able to finish up this year and consider whether or not we wish to go out for next year's capital. So just trying to make sure we incur the least amount of fees, yet still only borrow when we absolutely need them on the capital side. The $8 million issue for the taxable issuance is to refund our early retirement initiative, IMRF liability. That liability is just under $8 million, so including the liability and the bond issuance fees, we're recommending the issuance of $8 million in taxable bonds, and these are taxable for a variety of reasons, mainly because we're not doing them for the public purpose of roads, et cetera. So, we don't quite get that same interest rate, but as you see in the information, because they're only nine-year, our low rate is one and a quarter, and we don't go up, we go barely up to 4% for a very low average rate. Earlier today, council received questions from another financial advisor, Mr. Dan Kaplan, and Mr. Kaplan was a part of our financial advisory RFP process when we changed financial advisors earlier this spring. In that, in that email, he made a few comments about our process, and yes, I was approached by Mr. Kaplan a year ago, a little bit more than that, on this process, and at that point in time, we decided that we were already going to be looking at financial advisory services, and that we would take the job out for competitive proposals. So we did do that, and that did cost us time. So I want to be very clear that if we'd done this a year sooner, we would have saved more money. That is, so that is a clear statement. What we are looking for in the 2010 year is, 2010-11 year is approximately $150,000 savings, that's what we budgeted for, and when you look at the bond table, you see it's about $190,000, that's for 2011. We will, as soon as we execute this, quit paying the additional amount to IMRF by paying out the full amount of liability and start paying at a lower interest rate effectively. So we will begin saving money this year if we execute this bond issuance. In his, and if it's all right with the council, I'd like to go through those five bullet points that were addressed today, I think that's what Alderman Burris was suggesting we do. Again, we're looking at about a half a year, so in Mr. Kaplan's statement of $331,000, we're not that far off in the discussion. When he referenced $393,000 from a previous year, yes, that's with a higher outstanding principal and potentially a farther difference in rates, but that was because we had a higher principal at that point. We've paid down some of our principal, so there's also less interest to be seen. One of the things that I would take issue with is that the statement that we could have saved up to $722,000 this year. That's not really where we're at with this kind of a refunding. We're looking at exchanging year for year our amounts and saving the, the interest rate each year. It's quite, we could very easily have taken this issue and said, let's borrow this money for 20 years, and we'll pay the, under 3.5% for 20 years, but then the ERI liability would have lasted much longer, we'd have actually paid more interest over the 20 years, but saved on our cash flow. Well, I think at the present time, we're looking to reduce our debt, not expand it out over further years, and we already came to you earlier tonight with an idea on potentially doing that with the sewer situation, where we have sewer IEPA loans that are, is a big bubble in front of us, and we want to stretch that out because the sewer assets will last for 50 years. There's no connection like that for IMRF. We're not talking about a big infrastructure project where we should play around with our debt schedules. We know that IMRF gave us a calculation, and we're going to mirror that calculation and then show the savings from that, and those come into a total up to about $1.5 million over the life of the bonds. We were compared to Arlington Heights, and just as we, when we went through our whole process of looking at our total debt picture recently in the capital improvements plan, we may have a similar population, but then we diverge quite a bit. We have a lot more debt, and I don't think that we have that same, necessarily that same appetite for new debt just for financing and strategic purposes. Right now, we're issuing debt to cover our capital costs, and that's it. We're only issuing right now because we absolutely have to, to keep our roadway maintenance program moving forward. So... So I asked our financial advisors to take a look at what would happen if we did rearrange our debt somewhat. We could take our annual payment down to $500,000 instead of the 1.1 million or thereabouts when we start off and finance this over 20 years. But in the end, we'd pay about $12.2 million instead of the much lower amount listed in the report. So that's an option. We provide alternatives here, we're just not recommending that at this point. That's about all I have to say on the taxable. Again, the GO, that is an amount for the tax exempt. If we wish to do anything different in size, we could go up a little or down a little on that, but we do need to get out to market because the strike is over, and we are incurring project costs right now, and we brought a reimbursement resolution to you a little over a month ago to say we need to issue the debt and reimburse ourselves for it.
Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor and Alderman Jean Baptiste, when I moved introduction of this ordinance, I did not move introduction of the 6.5 million in twenty-year tax exempt. I only did the eight million. I know that for a fact. So I just, so if Alderman Jean Baptiste moves to suspend the rules, you should read the entire ordinance.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Sorry.
Seeing no further lights, would someone like, have we moved and seconded this? Alderman Jean Baptiste, would you like to read the entire thing?
Yeah, I'll do that again. Okay, move approval of the ordinance number sixty-five dash O dash ten for the issuance of $6.5 million in twenty-year tax exempt and eight million dollar dollars in nine-year taxable GO bonds. Okay? So that's the motion. Can we get a second?
Thank you very much.
Okay. This, well, move introduction. Let's move introduction.
Okay.
Okay? Can we get a second?
I do.
All right. Now, can, at this time, I would like to move suspension of the rules.
Second. City Clerk, could we call the roll on suspension of the rules?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Reluctantly aye.
The rules are suspended, nine to zero.
Okay, now move approval of ordinance sixty-five dash O dash ten.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Acting City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Yes, yes ma'am. Item A seven, move adoption of ordinance fifty-five dash O dash ten. This is a one-day liquor license that is being issued for, it will become a Class F license. It will permit the sale of beer and wine and liquor.
No, but not liquor.
No, no, wait a minute, but this Class F liquor license is for that purpose?
Yeah, that's right.
It is?
This would create Class F1.
F1, okay. Apologize. Right, it creates Class F1 liquor license to permit the sale of beer, wine, and liquor. Can we get a motion? Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. And at this particular point in time, there was an amendment that was offered, and that was for the mayor to please inform the Alderman of the ward whenever such a license was being issued, so that we understand where the event will be taking place in the ward. So I would move that amendment.
Second.
Okay?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes.
Okay, now I move the motion as amended.
Second.
All right, City Clerk?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to nothing. We have a new Class F1 liquor license.
Okay, that completes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jean Baptiste. Alderman Rainey, Planning and Development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the Planning and Development Committee, I'd like to report that the item P four, 1408 Dempster Street, the committee felt it needed some more information and did not have the advantage of having the applicant at our meeting, who we hope will be at our next meeting, and we're holding it in committee to deal with it then. So we did nothing with it. Next, ordinance sixty-two oh ten, which is the special use for Tiny Dog Bakery Cafe. I'm going to yield to Alderman Wilson, who would like to make a motion.
Thank you. I would like to move to suspend the rules with regard to this application. And this is a bakery on Davis Street, and the applicant has about a two-and-a-half-month build-out window. They can't start the build-out until the, until this is approved, and because our next meeting is not for another month, that would probably put him past the holiday season as far as getting open and able to operate, and, you know, trying to start a business in the post-holiday environment is not the ideal time to do that. So I think in order to give this business its best opportunity to get going, it makes sense to go ahead and take action on this tonight. So I would like to move that. Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The rules are suspended.
And I would like to move approval of the application.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the application. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
I should say approve the ordinance.
Correct.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. Next is Human Services. Have they all passed?
Special.
So we got to other committees. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make a pitch for another suspension of the rules. One of the things that I'm going to do at call of the wards is make a reference to the Rules Committee to return to two meetings in August. I think, I know there are a lot of vacations, and maybe a few of us will have to be absent from a meeting, but asking people to wait for over a month from one meeting to the next is an awful lot to ask, and I couldn't agree with Alderman Wilson more about the Tiny Dog Bakery. And I would like to ask if the council would consider suspending the rules for the food truck. I think we've, we've really worked on this a lot. People who've wanted to be heard on it have been heard. All of the regulations and the map and things about ventilation and where they can stop, I mean, I looked at that map. I can't imagine where they're going to be allowed to stop. Everything is blanketed. So I'm just, I'm going to take a chance, if you'll permit it, for me to move to suspend the rules to vote on the food truck tonight.
Second.
Second.
On a procedure, can I just?
I know.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
No, I, I just want to know from city attorney whether or not we're supposed to give notice of that before we suspend the rules in writing as we do it now. I don't know.
Well, with respect to the way it was posted on the agenda, I mean, there may be a little confusion with respect to the way it was posted on the agenda. But now the clarification that it's up for introduction, I mean, it is proper if the Alderman wants to move to suspend and have action, that she can go ahead and move for that.
I think, I think the indication on the agenda of suspending the rules is where staff is asking us to do it, but certainly an Alderman always has the privilege of asking the council, who of course does not have to agree with it, but I would implore you not to, to speed up a two-week process, but this is almost a five-week. So that's why I'm asking.
Second.
Has it been seconded? You seconded it? Thank you, Doris. All right, it has been moved.
Could I, could I speak to it also?
Yes, Alderman Wilson. And Alderman Nguyen, sorry.
I do want to strongly support, strongly support the motion for some of the same reasons as I made the, made the similar motion for the Tiny Dog Bakery. This business, it's unique, it's a bit different, and there were a lot of questions, but I've seen the applicants and a lot of other people working very hard, very diligently, and very quickly. And it's not just been thrown together either. They've been working on it for an extended period of time. So I don't feel that they are rushing this through by any stretch of the imagination. I know that they've been talking to me about it for many months since well into, early into the spring, rather. And I know that my questions have been answered, and I've observed them answering questions, providing updates, and providing information on an ongoing basis. So hopefully, at this point, the questions are addressed and answered, and we can go ahead and get them literally up and rolling.
Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, I also support this. I had a number of questions initially, and they have all been satisfied by the drafting of the ordinance. However, I did want to point out that I think that there's a typo on page, well, it would be page four of the ordinance, and it's page four seventy-six of the packet. It's subsection capital G. It says vendor shall not operate a mobile food vehicle within 500, and then in parentheses it says 100 feet of any fair carnival, circus, festival, special event, or civic event. I believe the parentheses should say 500.
That was actually noted at Human Services as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it, but it isn't correct here.
No, it hasn't been changed, it should be changed.
Okay, all right.
I appreciate, we will effectuate that change in standard.
Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to support suspension of the rules on this. There are still some questions that I have about it. Mainly, my concern is to give the downtown restaurant owners an opportunity to be heard. I do believe that the applicants are wonderful people, and I'm so pleased that they are making this investment in Evanston. But in an email today, we got a list from Heather of, well, let's see, one, two, three, four, five other restaurant owners who are also, who also may be considering having mobile food trucks. And while we have wonderful applicants in front of us, I think we need to look at the implication of potentially six mobile food trucks in our, operating in our city, and how we're going to both control them and have them operating without negatively impacting some of our restaurants and related businesses. So I need a little bit more time with this, so I will be voting no on suspension of the rules.
Seeing no more lights, it's been moved, and Alderman Rainey?
Alderman Fisk, I have an idea. I'd like to bring you along on this because it's summertime, and this truck is going to be useless, and I don't think, this probably will be the quintessential food truck, no matter how many more apply. However, I'm going to recommend an amendment to the ordinance that we allow for only one food truck license, just as we do with all of our liquor licenses. They're by the piece. In other words, each one is a separate application. So I'm wondering, since you agree with everybody that this is an excellent example of what a food truck could be, and I can understand your worrying about the future, but if we only allow for one food truck license in the city of Evanston at this time, and consider each one on a case-by-case basis as we do the liquor license, I'm wondering if you could agree to that.
Thank you. One of my concerns, which I think I started to talk about a little bit earlier tonight when we were addressing the, the vend contract, and was how much of, how much are the vending machines at the Civic Center really providing, for example, to our staff? And what would the impact be, for example, if the mobile food truck were parked behind the Civic Center? How much would that be deducting from the potential earning capability of the vending machines? I know this isn't much, but it's just a question that I have, and I just, I want to make sure also that we're not impacting negatively the three little restaurants over on Neustreet, all of whom are struggling right now. If we limited this to one truck, I will support that, but I do think that because this is a very, very new concept for us, and as one food truck will generate into more food trucks as time goes on, because that's just what you're going to need to do to be a business, to be competitive, you know, what the impact is going to be. And then perhaps we are giving one restaurant an undue advantage over others if we try to control it to a certain number of food trucks. I'd also like to just hear from legal staff about whether or not we can limit it to one, one truck.
I see no, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I see no impediment to doing a limit by, by the piece, which is analogous to what is done for liquor licensing.
Alderman Wilson?
And I was just going to point out, as far as the, the ability to enter into the market, it's a pretty costly bar that we're setting by, by drafting this ordinance. It's, you know, any fast food operation isn't going to be able to afford the cost of, you know, obtaining a vehicle like this in this kind of an operation. And as far as the competition goes, you know, I think, I think the concept behind it is to provide an alternative, you know, a healthy, you know, fresh, prepared food alternative to some things that might be out there. So it's, you know, is it competition? Sure, it's competition. Every business, every restaurant's in a sense competing with one another to try to, you know, capture those dollars, but, you know, these are good ideas, and these, I think, are things that are getting people, you know, out of the homes and walking around and going to stores and going to festivals and participating in things. And I think this is, it's just another creative extension of that, of that concept.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. Then I would just like to make an amendment to ensure that we are not allowing the mobile food truck to operate in R1, single-family residential areas. This is specifically along the lakefront, and I know we have a highlighted area around the lakefront, and I don't remember exactly what that, was that 100 feet or was that 500 feet? And 500 feet from the lakefront would push it right into an R1 zone.
It's currently one, it's currently 100 feet from the lakefront.
Okay, that would still push it into an R1 zone. Is there zoning restrictions on the operation of the truck?
Well, there wouldn't, the proposed ordinance does not speak to R1 zoning restrictions. So frankly, Alderman, I think with the effect of that amendment, I might suggest that that amendment would deserve some further study as, as it overlays with the map as currently before the council. I, I wouldn't want necessarily to, to miss something if we're going to go in terms of implicating the zoning restriction like you propose.
Again, I'm not trying to be difficult on this, but we, the, the mobile food truck really is a mobile type-two restaurant. Regardless of the quality of the food that it's serving, it's still serving on paper plates and paper cups and... and, and is required to be close to a public washroom facilities and things like that. So given the scrutiny that we give to type-two restaurants, that's my concern about the, the proximity to residential zoning.
Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Part of the, the function of this truck, in my understanding, was that it would be good for catering. And I didn't, I don't know that it excluded catering in, at home, at people's residences for fundraising or events. That's why I would question the R1 prohibition. But, you know, that, that I think is one thing they had, they had set their mind on being a possibility for their success.
Thank you.
There are limits on hours in the residential neighborhoods in, in the existing draft ordinance.
I, I do see catering as totally different than operating at special events or in various public locations using public streets.
All right, seeing no further lights, it has been moved and seconded that we suspend the rules. City Clerk, could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Fisk? No. Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Aye. I'm jumping the gun.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion does not pass. All right. We have the Commonwealth Edison.
Yeah.
That's.
That's my committee, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't know who was the chair of that committee.
This is the, back before us, the ordinance granting an extension until September 12th, 2015 of the electric ordinance to Commonwealth Edison. And as we've discussed somewhat before, the electric franchise negotiating team is recommending approval of the proposed ordinance granting a five-year extension. With that in the ordinance is an additional five-year option that the city could choose to exercise. That's a unilateral option. ComEd could not force us into that additional five-year timeframe. The five-year term is the minimum amount that ComEd has offered in the negotiations. And the, hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review the materials. There are things that ComEd is agreeing to do. When we commenced the negotiations, ComEd initially was suggesting that they wanted to discontinue doing a number of the things that they were doing. And my belief, and I, I think the majority, but not all of the, of the negotiating team, is of the opinion that locking ComEd into the five years would help prevent them coming back in a shorter time period and asking to get out of doing some of the things that they're presently doing for the city.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to comment on this? Alderman Rainey.
Second.
Need that second.
Well, it's, it's great that ComEd can't force us into extending the second five-year term because they certainly did force certain members of the committee into recommending the first five-year term. It's interesting to note that the, the Energy Commission and the task force recommended going along with Commonwealth Edison for five years before all the blowouts took place. So right after the recommendation, we had the Y, then we had the Downtown, and then we had all the others. I had, I had people in my ward, 12 families, out for, what, two days, when it only took 15 minutes finally to get them back online once a truck came out to help them. So, yeah, we had storms, but you know what? That's, that's Mother Nature, and that's our, our geographical area on the planet. We have storms. Doesn't seem to me that we should be basically out of business when we have storms. So I think, among other things, that keeping in touch with ComEd, with a three-year extension is the way to go. It's the way we've always gone. And I, you know, I, I've heard all of you say, oh, this is, this is fine. But I'm, I'm going to hang in there with three years. And I know that there would be absolutely no inconvenience to our staff, oh, a couple more meetings, or to Commonwealth Edison to, to do a three-year extension. And I don't believe they would take away any of the few privileges that we have. They only involve meetings. So I'm, I'm disappointed that the committee wasn't as lively and as active as in the past. And I regret that it's recommending, along with the Energy Commission, a five-year extension.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
And I did just want to point out that, that ComEd has not offered a three-year option. So that's not something that's on the table. And the, again, this is giving us an opportunity to lock them into doing a number of things as opposed to, you know, us conceding to all of their demands as, as has been implied.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to thank the Energy Commission and our negotiating team for securing us this agreement, thinking ahead to the possibility of another five-year extension. I'd like there to be more firm language in our contract with franchise agreement with ComEd, requiring more specifics with regard to the sourcing of the power for Evanston, and really forcing ComEd to push those greener alternatives than nuclear power. And perhaps there could be more specific terms of the next franchise agreement if we decide to undertake another five-year extension for what ComEd will do more generally and more specifically about how it sources the power to Evanston.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Have we just had three years of contract renewals with them? Is that our, our standard process has been three years? Alderman Wynn's saying yes, and Alderman Wilson's going.
Not exactly.
Not exactly. There, there have been periods when there's, it's been as short as a year in the past.
But not longer than.
But, right. And, and in the, in the recent past, they've been short-term agreements. Up to three years.
So why are we doing five years now instead of three years? What, and what, why wasn't that discussed at committee? It sounds like it wasn't.
Well, it was discussed. And it was actually discussed somewhat extensively, in my opinion. The, when we commenced the negotiations, ComEd wanted to stop doing a lot of the things that they're doing presently. So you've got that list, four-page list of things that ComEd has on their project list. When the negotiation started, there was discussion about discontinuing a number of those things. And we said no, for the most part, to those. And we wanted them to continue doing those. One of the concerns that I have is if we go with a shorter time period, ComEd will come in and ask us to adopt a, what they call a standard franchise agreement, which is basically what everybody else does for an extremely long period of time. When we were in the negotiations this time, that's what they asked us to do. I think 25 years was the term that they asked for. We said no. So we negotiated further, it came down to five years. Because we are getting terms and conditions that I view to be, and I think the rest, the, the majority of the committee viewed to be helpful, we also negotiated an option, our, our election option, to extend that for another five years. So for example, if we're five years down the road, we like how it's going, and we don't want them to stop doing those things. We can say, okay, we want to re-up for another five years. They don't have that option. So if we don't like how it's going, they can't say we can lock you in. It's, it's a unilateral option there. Furthermore, the expectation is, is that we will continue to work closely with them. You know, my personal experiences, and I don't know about the rest of the group, but generally speaking, I'm getting a pretty high degree of responsiveness when I'm making inquiries and asking for information. So my personal satisfaction as an alderperson is, is reasonably good. Am I disappointed with some of, you know, with some of the service? Sure. There have been some very big problems that have happened. But on the other hand, I do get callbacks. I do get information that, when I ask for that. Do I like the answers? Not all the time. But what the expectation should be is that if something's broken, they should fix it. But beyond that, we've expressed to them that our expectation is that we want them to be proactive in preventing problems. We had a resident here who was meeting with one of the representatives about an issue that they've been having. So, you know, that's the expectation. We have a high degree, or we, we have high expectations, and we expect quality service. So this isn't any indication that we're not having those same expectations.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded. Could we have a roll call vote?
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the ordinance is passed. That concludes the agenda. Next is call of the wards. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I wanted to begin my comments tonight with a thank you to you. I have been struggling with the issues not only affecting the Council v. Library Board, Council v. firefighters, staff, citizens, and feeling a little bit discouraged about the level of, of discussion that's going on in the community. And I think what you're doing with the Library Board is a wonderful first step, and thank you very much for that. As I told you in the hallway, I had been trying to figure out the, the way to do that, and you're the perfect person to do that. And I look forward to that meeting. The second thing is our first ward meeting. Our quarterly meeting is going to be the first Tuesday in September, which is September 7th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM in the Evanston Public Library. As always, we meet in the large community meeting room on the first floor of the library. And I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, too. Alderman Wilson.
I will thank the, thank the individuals who came out for the National Night Out last week. It was, or at least one of my areas was somewhat sparsely attended. But for those of you who did attend, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I, too, would like to thank you, Madam Mayor, for your encouraging words to our overall community. One of the things is that we can, I don't think that we can afford to have a division within the community of something that we all support, which would be libraries. But I think that, I hope that the Library Board will consent and meet with us in September so that we can get this discussion going.
Hope so, too. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, too, would like to thank Evanston Police Department and their efforts put forth for our National Night Out. It, it's really moving in the right direction as far as getting people active and keeping watch over each other as we can in order to help the police out. And I'd like to thank our chief, who even stepped in off of vacation for an evening to participate. That was about the call of duty, but it was great to see him. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
No report, Madam.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a reference to the Rules Committee. And that is, "No public body in the city of Evanston, whether elected or appointed, shall alter the method of funding that is based on property taxes without a public, proper notice of a public hearing." That's a reference to the Rules Committee. Secondly, I feel obligated and required and based on my own sense of ethics and civility to point out to those few people who have so demeaned themselves by the kinds of emails that I have gotten, which I am intending to forward so that the community can see exactly what the other side of the Library Board argument is. I, I am, I talked with a very high-ranking public official today who said in their 20 years, they have never seen such, such ugliness from what I'm getting. And I would like to tell you, they involve parts of my anatomy and the final, final blow, which all you women will appreciate, was I was called a fat pig. And I resent that. And I was told quite specifically that the Library Board and friends encouraged that people mail me, email me to point out how much they disapprove of my tactics. My tactics, I need to explain, involve a message board. I operate a message board in the city of Evanston, the main board, having close to 600,000 views right now. And that's only since I last archived. I pay for every penny. I've been accused of using taxpayers' money. I'm going to go over this again. If ever this city attempts to interfere with my right to discuss issues with my constituents, I, you know, I, I asked somebody today, can an alderman sue the city? I swear to you, I will get a bank of pro bono lawyers to defend me and represent me. Please do not tread on my message board. Please do not do that. I don't like everything that's said on there. Believe me, I have one rule on there, well, several rules that have to do with, you know, swearing and things like that. But the rule is, you have to admit to who you are. If you can't stand up to who you are and represent yourself on my message board, then you're not allowed to post there. So the, the last post about how horrible I am from a library friend has been removed. However, I felt comfortable sharing it with some of you. So the li, the message board is mine, it's nobody else's, it's not the Library Board. They're not going to tell me what to do. The city council's not going to tell me what to do. And I don't believe you would. But that, that's a very special thing that I have with my constituents. And I really resent people attempting to destroy it. And you know what? All it does is make me madder and make me more energized and make me more convinced that it's the right thing to do. So I, I wanted to say that, that the, the board, and hopefully, you will ask, implore them to call off their dogs.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Mayor Tisdale. I have a reference for AP&amp;W on plastic bag tax. The Ninth Ward intern, Chris Lee, has been working with Michael Drennan, who you may know ran against me and for the Ninth Ward, but is working, we're working closely together in a spirit of collegiality. And with the city's law department, thank you, Grant, on best practices and what other communities are doing in this regard on plastic bags. In that regard, last week, I believe, Johanna Niden from Economic Development and I met with managers at the Aldi and to talk about how they can be more involved in the community. It's something that they really want to do, so we're looking at ways to do that. And they've hired someone to pick up the trash in the, on the berm, near the Aldi, as well as in, in the parking lot. So we're thinking that's a, a positive move forward. And I'd also want to respond to something that Alderman Rainey said of, we may not all agree, but as long as I've known the alderman to my right, she's forthright and tells it like it is. People don't like to hear it, and we may disagree with how sometimes she does it. But I've never known her to lie or go behind someone's back. And I actually really appreciate my time on council with someone who I can trust 100% of the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Jean Baptiste.
Sorry, but Alderman Rainey, I just wanted to ask you, since, I've not read all the exchanges that have gone on. I read the, the most recent communication to you that I thought was in terrible text, you know, would offend me very much. But since there's a call now for ceasefire, why republish? but since there's a call now for ceasefire, why republish?
Because maybe you should see my, what I've gotten on my BlackBerry since that happened.
No, there's, there's that. Um, it, it may have gotten progressively worse.
It has.
Fine. I understand that. But I'm saying, since the mayor has called for, no, hold on one second. I'm just, let me finish my statement, and then you can help me understand better. I understand that, you know, you have your right to free speech and you should exercise it and, you know, and the right to express your dissent and discontent about a particular direction that a group of folks want to go. And apparently, because it has created such a major conflict in the community, the mayor has stepped forward and say, look, let's sit down, let's talk about this. Let's, let's, you know, see how we can move forward together. So, why republish the, the dirt that people are throwing at you? So, I would suggest that, you know, yes, I would suggest that we submit to the ceasefire and just, uh, let's get back on the right track.
After, after tonight, that's what I'm going to do. But I could not let, I could not let the people in my ward think that, you know, I'm this horrible person that, uh, I don't even remember her name, the lady from the Friends stood up there and, you know, said that I was, I, what, I'm creating class and racial, what, unrest? I can't remember what the words were she used, and that there's an ordinance that prevents me from doing what I'm doing. And I felt it necessary to stand up and tell my side of the story. And that's all I did. And after tonight, um, if all the people who sent their nasty, rotten little emails to me since this meeting has begun would stop, then everything should be fine. And I am in full support, I'm in full support of the mayor's, uh, recommendation. In fact, she and I talked at length about doing that. So, I'm fine with it.
Great. And that lady's statement doesn't characterize you. Alderman Burris just-
Not everybody.
Alderman Burris just made a statement.
Well, let's quit.
Hold on one second.
Let's quit.
Just made a statement that's very complimentary of you. So, I don't think, if the motivation is to try to clarify or correct that lady, my personal opinion is that it's not necessary. So, I would highly recommend not republishing. I know you stand up for yourself. I know you fight hard. I know you're a leader, you know? And, and I agree with the position that, look, the, the position of the library board was, you know, not the direction that we want to go in. But I'm just saying, since there's a call and you're part of organizing the call for discussion, then let's submit to the ceasefire. That's what I'm suggesting. Okay, all right.
Alderman Grover, did you want to make a motion to move into executive session? Cause that's what I'd really like to hear right now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make a reference to the Rules Committee about amending council rules, uh, to more specifically address decorum and civility in our discussion, so that we have a better understanding about what decorum and civility would require.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Wait, wait, wait. I haven't, Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
I, I totally forgot. I was going to make this reference earlier. The, the section cited by the lady at the thing about civil unrest and racial hatred, or whatever that was, I would like to make a reference to the Rules Committee to take a look at that section of our municipal code and see what we can do about that. It was written in 1954, I believe, and I think it needs work. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I believe I'm becoming the chair of the Rules Committee, so we will do that.
Okay, with that.
Alderman Wilson.
I would like to move that the city council convene into, into executive session to discuss matters involving personnel, real estate, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are appropriate for executive session pursuant to, uh, the statutory exceptions set forth in five ILCS 120 slash 2A, C1, C5, C6, C11, and C21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Acting City Clerk, would you call the roll? And you're doing a wonderful job, Acting City Clerk.
Thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Jean Baptiste?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris? Nine to nothing.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.